All right. We're gonna get going here. We had one work session this week, which was Underground Care Lab. Do I have a motion to approve the minutes? Assuming everybody is in our boardroom. Kathy Mulu's, Joe Seikens on favor. Thank you. All right, first up will be Star Canine. Agenda. This is a project we've seen many times. I don't think you guys have been working very hard. All right. So with this. I think we've got all the information that we need right now. Um, is there any further comments or any questions? The only thing that was brought to light this morning was that this site is currently in open. Take that on the D E C Superfund. If you're aware of that.
Oh, yeah.
That'll keep it between you and your owner to manage deals since it's more than.
Yeah, the air conditioning's going, yes. It'll be done in middeal, so they're working with the D E C already.
Perfect. Um, so with no other comments, I'm gonna read a motion.
Yeah, we've got the party on the score.
Yep.
Strike.
Yep. All right, so a motion to approve survey plan submitted five thirty-one twenty-two four on a survey of land surveyors dated seven twenty-one twenty-three with the following findings and conditions. Uh, change of use where no improvements are sought or required for building structure. However, in order to ensure adequate parking for the use on the site in accordance with the guidelines parking service at the site, the applicant has provided a site plan showing the proposed improvements to the parking. This is uh, this matter is exempt from the on the Dr. Capital for referral. This is an unlisted action under secret, uh, and this board has reviewed the E A F applicant dated two twenty-two twenty-two four. And grants the project a negative secret declaration as this minor action presents no negative environmental consequences. However, the applicant has been advised that there is an open D E C Superfund in of remediation open on this site. It is ongoing. This does not affect the, this board recycling approval purposes. It is up to the applicant to investigate the remediation matters that are open to determining if the site is appropriate for the use. I think we had discussed the improvements I shown on the plan must be completed. Three months at that point. So three months from today's date. This approval is made with further conditions that this approval is for plans and other submitted documents, segment documents that have been signed by the planning board chairperson. And the applicant requires that all of the work shown be completed by the applicant or a person technically involved in the conceal or appliance to be issued. Any proposed changes, additions, or deletions to the scope of work or materials in the segment documents are not approved and are subject to further site plan review pursuant to the town of the section one ninety-two dash one twenty-two. Your motion to approve, Kevin?
Second.
All in favor? Congratulations, thank you very much.
So our change of use is now approved and we're all set. Yes, yes.
Yep.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, next up we have J and G subdivision clustering. Um, at this point, uh, we've had several conversations. What I'd like to do is open a conversation or board here. Uh, discuss the application of the points in front of us. Um, make a recommendation based on that.
Can I clarify the question that I was hoping to add to answer tonight?
That being?
Sorry, I think the two appearances I've made, we've spent some time concentrating on the layout. And that really wasn't my intention for my appearance before this board and the appearance before the town board. Uh, we're struggling with the fact that this property has got a zoning classification that only allows one structure. And in order to, for my client to build multiple structures, a change needs to be made. Either a zone change, a variance, or the use of clustering. And it wasn't my intention to present you a layout that was going to be our final approved layout. My intention was to ask this board, in order to get by the obstacle of only having one building on the property, is clustering, the use of clustering acceptable to this board so that we can revert the request for a zone change or variance? If this board agrees with that question, we would then ask the town board to agree. Then we would come to full agree, we'd come back to the planning board and begin to work on the site plan that would be acceptable.
Right, so the application that's in front of us right now is for subdivision or clustering and for recommendation to the town board. Because that recommendation has to come to the mass to go to the town.
But I, I was specifically asking if the, if the board could see the use of clustering to avoid.
Well, that's what we're gonna discuss right now.
Yes, no, we, no, that's certainly the direction that um, that they're going in is clustering appropriate on this lot. This just is an example of what might, you know, because you need to be informed of what people are prepared, so that's.
And, and I, and I got a sense that there were some concerns about this particular layout. We, we can address concerns over a period of many meetings until we got to a layout and a product that you found acceptable. But I don't wanna go down all that road if one of the two boards just doesn't wanna use the, use clustering to allow multiple buildings on the park. But I think we're on the same page.
So I think if we look at the definition under our zoning code clustering, there's three. That I wanna just discuss with the board real quick. Uh, get any feedback? We'll start with appropriate use of such land. Looking at the application that's in front of us, you know, knowing that the layout that was presented to us is not necessarily the layout that would be the final layout. Is the use of this site under the clustering definition?
Well, based on the um, kind of things we've outlined here, I would say. Sorry, it's, it's, I, no, we do not think it's good use of clustering because it doesn't preserve the natural landscape and so forth or the, the surrounding areas.
Yes, that's, and that's exactly, so the, the three points that are part of that. Zoning code, appropriate use of such land, facilitate the adequate and economical provisions of streets and utilities, and preserve the natural and scenic qualities of the land, so those are the three points that we're kinda proposing right now. So the appropriate use of such land as a clustering subdivision, I'm not sure, I don't feel some of this is the appropriate use of that code to apply to this site.
The piece is too small to achieve true clustering.
Right. Right. Um, how about facilitate the adequate and economical provision of streets and utilities?
I think that's what I goes with ducks. Whether it's private road or public road, I think that's maybe a factor. Right, what would need, right? So, I mean, it comes out to their, their wishes if you want, so how this how to be painted or maybe how you're being painted, it's all private.
Yeah, and.
When we, when we discussed it, they talked about it being a, a road that belonged to the town, which would mean we had extra use, not.
Right.
Not combined use or not, you know, the owner's responsibility, so it would be adding more to, to um, to it.
How about preservation of natural scenic qualities? At this point, I don't believe that I've seen basically an open space right now. There, I don't believe it to be a preservation of that open space. The point of clustering is to consolidate those structures into smaller, more condensed development in order to preserve that open space. I just don't believe that this site is marginal in order to adequately.
And it wasn't proven to us in the way, you know, like. I'm sure somebody could get very crafty and, and prove it, but you don't have to do that.
Right. And then, you know, if we look at the characteristic of the rest of the neighborhood and surrounding area, it's a very traditional kind of neighborhood in that space. I'm not sure that clustering fits that character of the neighborhood in there unless somebody disagrees with me. Um, so I think based on.
I just, the, the other thing that I, that has been talked about is that the number of units that might happen on a cluster.
Right.
Could happen, right, so um, because the, the code does have this provision that.
You can use the.
Yes, to say that, it could be a lot of units. Sit under, you know, clustering middle. And so that presents a challenge. So one hysteria that.
The part of the problem may be that we have to do less units in order to, to use the clustering.
Yep.
If, if you're answering a question, I believe it is many, it's eighty multi-family units can be built on this property. We presented about eighteen townhouses, which is considerable, yes. Your, your zoning reg right now does not have a, much of a height restriction on your, or a area restriction on your multifamily units. We haven't gotten the exercise to see how many could fit on the property. But the current zoning allows many, many more units, you know, multi-family, one-building structure.
Minnesota, it will be self-limiting, it's not a large site, so we're, we're building and parking on there. And meet the open space.
We'll come back, we'll show you how many apartments can fit in within your zoning regulations and subdivision scopes. And I don't, just said a quick one, so it's probably sixty to eighty units.
Yep. Um, is there any further discussion or need to add here? We have a, is this the applicant type for some of the people living in the neighborhood that came to this meeting because of this project dispute? Or is this a move issue for us at this point? Um. Yeah, we can open a, a quick public meeting. It was not advertised as such, so we'll, we'll allow.
We weren't called allowed to, I mean, everybody in here.
It's, yeah, it didn't require us to have a public hearing at this stage. So we can certainly open it up for, for neighborhood comment. Any questions? Well, you know, it will open. So I'd ask that you stand and state your name, address, um, we're gonna do no more than two or three minutes. Just to kinda keep things moving along in here, but if you'd like to hear yourself.
My name's Paul Godfrey, I live in Russellville, rural park. I had to hold a set, some of the, what we saw during this. Doesn't directly impact me, but the building itself would impact me based on drainage, traffic impact, green space, structural barrier between what possibly is proposed. And actually, there are five homes that back up to that property. You know, which has been bringing and just opening out drainage. Drainage, my, the, the rural park has had a problem for years. Still has a problem based on what goes on behind the five houses. So I would strongly object anything done there until they resolve that problem, so it doesn't cause more problems with the drainage. But I think looking at the apartments in there. Oh, yeah, I didn't find any word term, but it's ridiculous. Okay, it's almost as poor as the Oregon ideas putting family dollar down the street, which, which got pushed through. So, I think traffic down there, through the time, I don't know how far or when. But the neighbor, neighbors here would probably express interest in traffic, green space, sound barrier. Helen Road's got a lot of traffic as it is now, especially since the state, the rumble strips on the, on the hash marks. So here are the trucks that are turning left coming out of Skyler Road down the U P S. They're gonna add a lot of insults and injury by many more traffic and help people get out of a development right there. Bad, now crossing, getting out of Skyler, so. So I think just a few things, how it impacts our, our assessments, is all of those the questions we've got on, you know, some of the other residents.
Well, I will say that, you know, what's in front of us right now is simply just the idea of the clustering's over there.
I think so, it doesn't have any.
Right, well, that's not what we're looking at right now, so, different terms. We are, we are looking at making a formal recommendation to the town board to implement clustering on this site. If this site is to ever be developed, whether it be clustered, whether it be an actual development, that will come back to this board. We'll have an opportunity to work through all of those issues, like you brought them up, brought them to us. We're looking at right now whether or not clustering is the appropriate use for the site and making that recommendation to town. So when, when and if this becomes developed, I would welcome you to come back and provide for.
I would certainly come, I'd pay my other friends, neighbors, and say a few words. As would, we, we definitely would, would like to be informed as opposed to remotely hearing about this, so going, going ahead, you know, we, we wanna be notified. We would appreciate it if the people that live in rural park would like if it's possible to pass some sort of mail to us specifically or if we collect them, we can provide them with some form of our names, contact information. We'd like that, and also their concern is J and G building.
Well, no one's the builder.
No, they're the. It said J and G.
Right, that's just the applicant, that's the only thing that gets put into the.
I think there are many of us here that would concern about J and G based on having twenty-two homes. Go by J and G and I would make a guess that if you asked any one of us how pleased we are at this point in our lives. That particularly to around, so another story of other time.
We'll, we'll turn on, on topic with this.
Okay.
Perfect. Sure. Paul Godfrey, G O T T, R I E, sixty-four fifty-four, Russell. Is there anybody else that would like to?
Yes, please.
Hi, Bob and Mary Ann.
Give it about two minutes.
Yeah, no problem, Bob and Mary Ann Durantini, and we have Ann Russell Lee as well. And full disclosure, Jamie is a partner with my own, they're a partner. So just so, there's no question about that. I have one question and, and at this point, and it's um, it mentions the clustering, but it also carefully mentions the apartments. And how we're looking, you're, you're solely discussing the clustering, right, as of this minute, doesn't seem like you're leaning toward that. If clustering is not an option, does it then go back to the con, the, the idea of apartment buildings, which is the one that's saying is, is current use approved, and, and it can be up to four stories and eighty, up to eighty units, which based on the drawing that they provided and knowing that that's not obviously a final, um, if you did eighty units, this is based on thirty-two. I don't know where you're even gonna put the rest of the, of the.
And if that, if that option ever came back to this board, we would be working diligence, we would work with the applicant to review all of that. I mean, I think we take all of those things seriously and can be considering.
Right, because I could be wrong.
That's not in front of us at this.
No, I understand, but I could be wrong, but the way I, I somewhat took it was, was, well, if you don't let, if we don't do the clustering, then we're gonna come back and look at the apartment building and it could be up to eighty, so, you know, eighty versus fifteen, which obviously is meant to, you know.
I'm understanding, yep.
Give you an idea of, okay.
So we have a number of neighbors here, and we understand what the planning board is doing with the clustering versus no clustering. We understand what John Yurin just said. We're actually lot number two, so, so we're directly affected by this, with the drains and so forth. All we would ask as your planning, because personally, I don't think that we're opposed to some development. We're not, we're not opposed to something happening out there, you can clean things up, it's a mess, the property's a mess. We also understand the developer needs to, needs to get some money back out of that money for this park. Just include the neighbors because the concerns will be, whenever you figure out whether it's gonna be clustering or an apartment, apartment, you're gonna get a lot more neighbors here for, for sure, for sure, the people, the neighborhoods will oppose that. But, you know, just consider the drainage, talking about already, you know, the, the parking, uh, the Skyler Road entrance right across from Scotty's house, things like that. We understand what you, what you folks have to do, we're not opposed to it, we're not here to raise hell, we're just here to, to, to just ask you to consider the neighborhood of what's going on, and, and we will come back.
That's right.
Because it would change our neighborhood dramatically.
Including the assessments.
Depending on what.
We just got bumped up, again.
Thank you.
Is there anybody else that would like to speak?
Was the zoning changed for this application?
I'm sorry, say that again.
Was the zoning changed?
No. Nope.
What was the bridge?
It's still. Business transition.
Yeah.
Favor.
Nothing's happened. All these folks are doing is trying to understand whether they want to change the zoning to allow for this clustering.
Well, if we can change it. The zoning, I just wanna clarify, it's not changing the zoning, it's allowing.
Understood. Yes.
Clustering to happen.
So you don't have to change the zoning.
Correct.
Would you mean a variance in?
No, it would be a recommendation to the town board. Uh, the town board would then do their diligence, their review. If they accept it, then it would be a command plus, uh, more of a development.
Next, it'll be more than one story, you're saying?
I'm sorry.
It could be more than one story, one, two, three stories?
Or.
Well, clustering, right.
Well, if you, if you're talking clustering, clustering was different, what you was, I mean, if you're talking about the apartment building, it could be, that's allowable by that zone. Right now.
But how big would be your house, it would be on the lot, house, up, up to.
None of that's on tape.
Right.
None of that's in there.
None of it. Yep.
That's what they were. Thank you.
Is there anybody else? Close that part of the meeting at this point? Um, we go ahead and read the, the resolution that's in front of us.
Let, let, let me, let me ask, did, did I have the opportunity to look and review this proposed resolution?
Yep.
And, and did you have an opportunity to comment on, and make any changes?
Yep.
Is there anything you want to change based on this discussion? Something? No?
Um, J and G Incorporated, the applicant by its counsel, Daniel, Daniel Partiva, as well. Our written letter application dated April second twenty-two four has requested that the planning board review its proposal for a referral to the town board for use of clustered development. For premises at tax map number zero-two-six point dash zero-six dash zero-one point one located in Town of Duett. The applicant presented, and this board has reviewed, density plan for multi-tenant dwelling apartments dated May seventeen twenty-two three, which use may be permitted, uh, may be permitted use in business transitional zoning district in Town Code, National Plan. As well as, uh, the proposed plan dated May seventeen twenty-two three, showing the plan for thirteen attached dwelling units, the proposed plan. In reviewing, in reviewing this proposal, the board has appropriately considered pertinent regulations at Town of Duett subdivisions, regulation section one sixty-four dash ten, and New York Town Law's the section two seventy-eight. Planning Board determines in its judgment, with reasonable discretion exercise, that the application will not benefit the town and otherwise comply with the intent of Town Law section two seventy-eight, with Town Code section one sixty-four dash ten. And therefore, this proposal, application shall not be referred to the town board for its approval of the use of the Town Law section two seventy-eight. With the findings, in coming to its determination herein, this board is particularly guided by pure language of section two seventy-eight of Town Law, which states that cluster development is meant to provide an alternative permitted method for the layout configuration and design of lots, buildings, and structures, roads, utility lines, and other infrastructure, parks, and landscaping in order to preserve the natural scenic qualities of open lands. Further, this board has considered the Town of Duett legislation, which was enabled by section two seventy-eight of the Town Law. Town of Duett subdivision regulation one sixty-eight dash ten states its purpose as follows. Purpose of. Uh, states its purpose as follows, the purpose of this section is to enable and encourage flexibility to design and develop land in such a manner as to promote the most appropriate use of such land, to facilitate adequate and economical provisions of streets and utilities, and to preserve the natural and scenic qualities of open lands. This board finds that the proposed plan, as presented, uh, as an example, provides no opportunity for the preservation of natural quality of land rather than propose a plan, any feasible plan for development under cluster, and the ensuing construction consists of near destruction of all and any natural land quality and call for significant land disturbance in order to construct the requested necessary access roadway, urban surface, and structures, as well as required drainage facilities. The proposed plan does not provide for the preservation of trees or other scenic qualities of open land. Being a relatively small parcel on a busy highway, the applicant has not shown that there are significant, are seen in quality of open land to be preserved. And in any event, set forth above, any open land is virtually non-existent in the proposed plan. Massing the structure under the conventional plan versus massing the combined structures in the proposed plan are not significantly dissimilar so as to warrant the application of clustering for the plot. Town Code section one sixty-four dash ten, further uh, further state, states that cluster development should facilitate the adequate and economical provision of streets and utilities, significant roadway of this proposed project. And any of that might allow for this density does not appear to present a plan any more beneficial to the town than the conventional plan, which does not contain separate right-of-way, be it public or private. There is no, there is no showing economies of utility would be positively affected by this conventional, uh, version proposed plan. Further, the nature of the proposed right-of-way does not facilitate the open space aesthetic that is critical to the cluster development. The town has successfully utilized cluster development, and the development point east provides for a naturalize, naturalization of the land ruined in structures in a campus field, carpet, out across woods, also was a cluster development which preserves significant natural geographic features in open space. In these instances, lot sizes from conventional plan were reduced and therewith result resulted in significant reservation of natural land features in open space and clustered land. Those opportunities are not present here, nor are they proposed to be there. Apartment building is only one of the uses which the land may be, may be put in this business transitional zoning district. Town Code defines separate apartments, dwelling units, technically allowing the high calculation in apartment residential dwelling units in proposed conventional density plan under section one sixty-four dash ten. However, such a calculation cannot afford the overriding purpose of cluster development set forth in section one sixty-four dash ten and Town Code two seventy-eight. Board determines that mere potential absence of apartment complex and multi-tenant structure, which may or may not be constructed on-site without any corresponding appropriate provision of open space is not to the benefit of the town that clustering intends. Certainly, the limited size of the available parcel break the P E C ability to include open lands. The open lands aspect that cluster development seeks to involve, however, the limited lot size and emphasis of the property site is not appropriate for cluster development. Good day, can I have any motion? Do this one, Kevin? Second. Favor. Thank you. We'll, uh, welcome another opportunity to talk to you about the site with clustering development. Will be my fire, sorry? Oh, will be my fire, sounds good. Thank you. What was the question? Absolutely. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, appreciate it.
All right, uh, next up. That's my friend. R E J F High Tech.
It was good to go back to the guy that tomato said. There's no more tomato.
Okay, um, have you do kind of a quick update here? Um, I think worked through a lot of the issues. Hopefully, I think you've responded to any of our comments and so. Sure. Just do a school update as to where it stands.
Yep, well, we, uh, we did get some, uh, some new comments back, uh, relative to the split. Uh, we've made those, uh, adjustments. Um, and there was comments relative to some site, uh, features, uh, predominant things like, uh, uh, curving, uh, necessarily here, stormwater stuff, uh, uh, landscaping around the, the hot box. And, uh, I think that was the primary thing, landscaping in the bioswales. So relatively straightforward, uh, type things. And we replied, uh, to all those. I think the, those were satisfactory to the satisfaction of the town. And, uh, and hopefully we're, uh, we're there, uh, to meet my, my, your, your goals, desires.
Well, we appreciate you working well.
Thank you.
Do you have a sign and seal and set tomorrow's?
These are signed, they say, they say not for construction because they're, and this is one of the big word. We, we literally had people out in the field building, but plans aren't approved. Um, so once they're approved, I can, I'll take that not construction off and. But they are signed and sealed. And then it just says that these are not approved for construction, they're for regular approval.
Do you have a timeline?
Do you have the building?
Yes.
Yes.
First, yeah, absolutely.
Yeah. Do you have a timeline on that sign and seal set?
Tomorrow morning, eight thirty.
You want.
I mean, it literally just, you know, what, what happens is if, if you, if you had comments tonight, if something came up. Okay, and these plans are floating around the street. And I'm, but there now I was involved in a six-year lawsuit because somebody decided to take one of our preliminary plans and then go build on it. Um, and, um, we resolved it, but from that point in time, you know, we were very specific on when they are actually released, but of course.
Okay. No, that's fine. I, well, we're gonna, we're gonna condition here for getting those signs.
Absolutely.
So I know he's at eight thirty tomorrow morning, but I'm gonna give you seven days to get the.
I appreciate it. I mean, it's literally, it's, it's a matter of when I walk in, they reprint them about those on there and I sign.
I get, I get how it is. I just.
You know, I've, I've just been, I've been gunshot. I mean, I had something, actually build, build up, try to build up schematic plans and put about a half an hour rolls in and they have to take them out. So, you know, it's just, it's crazy things happen and that's the only reason we do that.
Um, any other questions? In the board comments? I'm gonna go ahead and read the presentation and. Settle in. This is a pretty long one.
Motion to approve the site plan last revised June seventh, twenty twenty four, together with the additional details and plans that are part of the site plan submission and further set forth in the SEER findings below. With the following findings and conditions. Findings, this expansion and relocation project supplements the established high-tech project on the site. Belt wire equipment, which received its initial site plan approval in twenty seventeen. Modifications to the site as set forth on the site plan include building expansions, relocating existing driveway, and improving stormwater facilities on the twenty six point four acre parcel. Parking requirements for the size of building, addition, which allows for additional manufacturing capacity. Were the subject of significant consideration by the board and the applicant? This board is satisfied that the code is appropriately met where the parking count requires four hundred and twenty spaces. The applicant will be building additional spaces on the site so that there are three hundred and fifteen parking spaces on the site. Prior parking variance for the site which run with the land allows a twenty-five percent parking to be held in reserve until and unless needed. That reserve is shown on the plan. Applicant intends to have three hundred and fifty built on site with a twenty-five percent in reserve as for prior variance, which means we will have no further variance is required. The applicant has presented, he built, has presented he built a design and site plan that are in accordance with the standards of the high-tech zoning district. Some standards are adopted and implemented by several, similarly situated progress. A prior site plan approval of this board required that an RPZ used pressure zone backfiller be installed on the site where indicated on the plan. Availability of parts and COVID delays has delayed that installation. Upon review of this project, the water department expressed the importance of that installation. And inasmuch, it was part of the prior site plan approval that has not been implemented. It is addressed herein as part of this approval. SEER, this board declared this a matter, this matter of type one action. SEER declared itself lead agency for the board in review as its May ninth, twenty twenty four meeting. Notice of intent to act as lead agency as required under SEER was appropriately delivered to all interested involved agencies. The time has now passed for any agency to object to the town planning board survey. As lead agency, no agencies have objected or commented on the notice except. New York State D O T by email dated June twelfth, twenty twenty four indicated it had no objection to the planning board taking on the role as lead agency for the project. Correspondence of D E C on June twelfth, thirteen indicating that action would be noted given. The D E C would deliver comments as D E C permitting given any that would be required on the site. This board has reviewed the F D A F of applicant dated May ninth, twenty twenty four and has taken hard looks at all environmental impacts of this project, which has included view of the following. Demolition plans dated May twenty third, twenty twenty four and revised June seventh, twenty twenty four. Site plan dated May ninth revised May twenty third, twenty twenty four and revised June seventh, twenty twenty four. Creating utility plans A, B, and C dated April sixteen, twenty twenty four revised June seventh, twenty twenty four. Landscape plan dated May twenty third, twenty twenty four revised June seventh, twenty twenty four. Erosion control plan dated May twenty third, twenty twenty four revised June seventh, twenty twenty four. Building metric plan dated May, twenty twenty four. You're likely to get tired. Erosion incentive control details dated May twenty third, twenty twenty four and revised June seventh, twenty twenty four. Landscaping details dated May twenty third, twenty twenty four and revised June seventh, twenty twenty four. Stormwater management details dated May twenty third, twenty twenty four and revised June seventh, twenty twenty four. Sanitary storm details dated May twenty third, twenty twenty four revised June seventh, twenty twenty four. Water details dated May twenty third, twenty twenty four and revised June seventh, twenty twenty four. Parking lot details dated May twenty third, twenty twenty four and revised June seventh, twenty twenty four. Miscellaneous details, two sheets dated May twenty third, twenty twenty four revised June seventh, twenty twenty four. Stormwater pollution prevention plan dated May twenty, uh, May twenty twenty four and revised June seventh, twenty twenty four. Planning Board further consulted with the planning board engineer with respect to case number four on the F D A F part two regarding impact on groundwater. It's been determined that there will be an impact on groundwater, however, the applicant has provided a SWIP, which is reviewed by this board and the planning board engineer. It's not that any negative impacts can be mitigated as further assurance of same board will adopt conditions beyond the county's planning board. Any more referral made to the United Forward Lady Stormwater Greenage, including the requirement of view by the Odagun County Department of Water, Environment Protection, New York State, New York State Throughway Authority, and implementation of any further requirements set agencies. Ensure all impacts are adequate when mitigated further in the event any mitigation is permitted.
Or mitigation.
Or permitted. Apartments required after full D E C review, the applicant must address same. With respect to the other seventeen questions, impacts, part two of the F D A F. Evidence and documents presented as part of the project support that the project will have no or small impact on the environment. Conclusion, the planning board of the Town of Duett has taken hard look at all environmental impacts as required by SEER. And hereby determines that the actions herein is rated, is rated negative SEER declaration finding that we actually have caused no significant environmental impacts. In Odagun County Planning Board, this board has reviewed the Odagun County Planning Board referral dated May twenty nine, twenty twenty four. Accepts the modifications set forth therein as conditions included. Uh, number one, projects within and on Odagun County Drainage District that require a stormwater pollution prevention plan, SWIP, must submit a copy of the SWIP beyond the county's Department of Water, Environment, and Protection for review. Municipality must ensure any mitigation as may be determined by the department is reflected on project plans prior to or as a condition of municipal approval. Number two, drainage and drainage plan must be provided to the New York State Throughway Authority and Y S D A for review. Municipality must ensure any mitigation that may be determined by the Y S D A is reflected on the product plans prior to or as a condition of municipal approval. No increase in the amount of site drainage entering into the throughway as a result of this construction will be permitted. Further conditions, number one, final construction drawings must be submitted to the department in seven days, signed and sealed by the engineer professional. Condition two, the RPZ installation as required as a condition of the site and approval on the site must be completed and in accordance with the Town of Duett Water Department application dated June fourth, twenty twenty four and accompanying plans. Further, a landscaping plan for the area around the installation must be submitted and approved by the planning board. Certificate of occupancy for the exponential I B issued until the installation is certified, uh, as completed by the town engineer. Mission three, this approval is made with the further conditions of this approval, plan, and others submitted documents, site plan documents that have been signed by the planning board care person and the applicant, and requires that all the work shown be completed by the applicant. For certificate of occupancy, where the plan is issued, any proposed changes, additions, or deletions to the scope of work or materials, full site plan documents are not approved and are subject to further site plan review, so that the Town of Duett will session on that. Two.
You don't mind, huh?
I'm glad for Kathy, I know.
Hey, may the rest of your resolutions be shortened. I will make the motion to approve in a second.
Second.
Kathy, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much. Have a wonderful evening. Okay, over all of our approvals. Next up, we have Franklin Office Park. There are two items on the second. Uh, Franklin Office Park, building one, building two, although they are two applications in some of us. They build the same site, and we can talk about them.
Hi, I'm Steve Oliva, uh, partner with Oliva Management. Um, proposing two office buildings on the vacant pieces of land on Franklin Park Drive eight, twelve, and eight, twenty. Um, I haven't been here in a while, so I usually put these things up, but I'll just go to your guys' screen. Right?
Yep.
A little more tech technology placed here. Um, this is the park that was done, was the, was preliminarily, uh, preliminarily, uh, developed by Las Vegas back in, I think, the late eighties or whatever. Uh, didn't really take off, um, through many factors. We actually built this building here and owned it for twenty years on Kirkville Road sixty five, seventy five, and we just sold it, uh, a few months ago. Uh, same looking buildings, all three are seven thousand square feet, colors different, that's about it. And a little bit of the culture sewn on it on the entrance way. So to offset our costs or offset our gains or whatever, we, uh, we've been trying to buy this forever, these two sites here that would go apart of the park. And, uh, this already has the curb cut right here and half of the parking on this site, uh, was already developed by this, uh, they built this building. So basically, we're trying to finish the park with the two seven thousand square foot office buildings that will look like the existing three in there. Maybe the color will be a little bit different, but, uh, that's what we're trying to get the park developed and finalized after all these years.
What's the total acreage on the?
Uh, well, there are two separate parcels. This is over eight here. Several, um.
Yeah.
Um, it says that. One of them is, um, where are we here? Uh, seventy three, uh, seventy three thousand nine hundred and seventy four square feet, so about an acre and a third maybe? Obviously, this parcel right here, the larger one where the stormwater, water management areas are. And this is just.
One of the items that we will need that you probably provide as part of an updated package is an updated survey.
Yeah, I, I did, did I drop those off, uh, did I drop those off to, uh? Yeah, I did. I dropped those off to Leah the other day. So Leah or? Yeah, I dropped those off the other day. I was talking to Alana. You're Alana, I guess? Hi, Steve. Uh, but anyways, I talked to Alana the other day and, uh, she said, you know, we can go ahead, go forward with this, develop, finalize our updated surveys. But anyways, we got them to, I got them to Leah the other day. I personally dropped them off. Uh, they hopefully are in the package. Survey didn't change much. We have a topo on there as well.
Right.
So basically, um, it's that we're looking to finish the park. And so we basically have five identical buildings in there. And the only thing differ is probably just the color of, uh, the buildings, which these kind of got a little crazed with the colors, but we're gonna keep them earth tone. Obviously, the town would have to approve that.
So there'd be shared parking if they're two separate lots. Yeah, I mean, I think there's, there's a few things that you're gonna have to. Okay, because the parcel on the lot, lot one, doesn't have enough parking. Lot two has excess parking. I mean, you're looking at the fact that these two buildings are going to be tangential to each other. So there will need to be.
Something that can.
Uh, well, parking easements.
Okay, we, we could do that. Yeah, that's, that's fine.
I will have to be, yeah, cause I want to be. Yeah.
Yeah.
Cause you're. Drainage, yes, but we're just talking about.
Cause that's shared also.
Yeah.
The drainage actually, um, uh, is not only for these two buildings. I think the, um, our building back here, which we sold, the drainage, uh, actually runs along here and it's piped into here and runs all the way out to Franklin Park.
So that will need to be included as part of that.
Yeah.
So, so if that's permitted.
If there's separate, I think there's some blocks in the park.
Yeah, they are.
So, um, basically, you've got. I'm not gonna think about those other ones right now about this. Figure out what we're gonna do about those other, you know, if it's drainage for that, I have to get a better feel of it.
I think it's only this building, these, these buildings, I don't believe, I don't believe drainage.
So did that building have an easement or, uh, an agreement with the stormwater that's currently on this?
This?
Yeah.
Yes.
So is that still in place?
Yes, yes, it is, cause we just sold this building. Yes, it did.
So can you, can you supply us with that?
Sure.
And then the, like, one is not gonna be able to be built without the other.
Right.
Maybe you have it divided for financing or whatever reason, we're not a problem with that, but it's gonna be contingent and it's all gonna have to be built because if that's built, it's not gonna have enough parking, right? So.
Yeah, I'm not sure what the parking is, but, um, yeah, it might not, but, uh.
So if the other one is built, then you have to have the cross easement on the, um, drainage, which you probably have by example on the other piece.
Okay. We can also, you know, we resub and add it into one or whatever, but, uh, um, if that had, if that were the case, but, uh, the one parcel.
I don't know if you can get two buildings in one parcel, cause this is in an R two zone and it has a use variance.
Right.
Back from like eighty-four, something like that, so that complicates a little.
So just because of that R two, is that why? Cause I know we have, we have, you know, four buildings right now that are that same situation on Fly Road.
Yeah, I don't think you could have two buildings on an R two, uh, cause it's a single family home base, basically.
Even with that experience.
You would, variance on the use, but not on like the lot, like the dimensional requirements.
Okay. So would it be contingent upon, like, let's say we started this building first? And then, um, you know, would we have to even do this building if, I mean, eventually we could do it. This building, let, let's just say, would have an overflow of parking.
Um.
They will hopefully get approved at the same time, but we would have to.
Well, it might, it might.
Well, here's, I'm just gonna play out a scenario for a second. You, you build that proposed building B. It gets sold or, you know, somebody operates that building. Building A wants to get built, but now the owner of building B doesn't want to provide parking easement. Building B can't be built.
Right, no, we would, we would. Right, no, we would, we would put that in there, I mean, you know, we're gonna own both things, we're, we're not gonna build them itself.
Do you own the building to the left?
This, no.
Okay, so.
This is already an easement, the, the curb cut.
Yeah. Well, so building A would also not have stormwater, but we most likely wouldn't approve building B's parking the way you have it because we are, we as a standard try not to have excess parking.
Right, I see.
So we wouldn't approve the parking as is. Right, and it could be like in reserve or others in other ways.
So disagreeing space, and then whenever we do, building A.
But yeah, we have to have some agreement.
Right.
Yeah, I mean, I think our concern is hindering one on the other.
Right.
And then.
I mean, we would look at these in tandem to be improved in tandem for whole development. That if you wanted to show also basic plan or master plan for this, it's as if you do building B first. We're not gonna build a couple of these spots because of reserve, then when building A is built, we have to build those reserve spots.
Sure.
Because they'll be part of that parking easement that you're going to provide us.
Right.
Because building A is underparked.
Yeah, our whole plan was basically doing it all together, but, you know, um, yeah, we understand that, that's our community, kind of cross, whatever.
Um, sorry.
No, I just asked a question. It would hit for later.
I think we have Mark, Sheriff Town, our planning board engineer. Mark, do you have any other questions or comments on this property?
Um, yeah, I mean, I think stormwater is going to be a, an issue that we need to look at closely. Um, and I think you've touched on the issues with cross access and such, so, uh, yeah, I, I think stormwater is a big issue.
What, what do you need, you know, other than a SWIP, what, what would you like to, to have for review from this applicant work concept, obviously?
Right.
Uh, I think whatever falls within the SWIP will cover what is needed.
I al- I also think we need to see all the old variances and coordinations with the other buildings, if there's some.
Variance I included, use variance I included, but, uh, yeah, as for the, um, again, I don't believe these parcels do anything in this area, but when we sold this, when we owned this, we had that.
Right.
Variance or, or easement right there.
Yeah.
I think it's, but because this is, you know, office park in our contiguous lots, I think we wanna understand what's happening.
Right, okay.
I mean, there's stormwater still runs to that pond.
Yeah, I don't believe these two do, but, um, yeah, that one is still running, yes.
Yeah, for sure, that's what I'm saying.
But let's get confirmation on that, I mean, you don't believe they do, but they may, you know, cheat, let's do that.
Yeah, okay. I mean, the reason why I don't think that, because I, um, I don't have any, uh, the only easement I have is, is this right here.
Right.
On these two surveys, so I'm assuming it would have showed something like that, but, uh.
Well, it depends on how it was brought to the floor originally.
The original, we found in the use variance folder, the original office park didn't look like this, I think it had four buildings, four lots.
The only thing the original office park had was, this was nine thousand square feet. That, this was the larger building, this, and actually, office park looked exactly like this, except this was larger, wider and larger. This would be shrunk, we shrunk it because we're already getting parking, and we keep every, all the buildings the same. So if you go back to the plans, the original plans, which I have, the old Zosmer Fresh showed every building in the park, but this was nine thousand square feet.
Yep.
That was the only difference, and these were here and so forth like that, um, I believe that was.
So is that stormwater management area existing?
Yeah, it, it is, it is, but, it is, but it's overgrown, it's, uh.
It's also, I think it points more, it's a lot more linear going from this one, so.
Yeah, I mean, there's a, you can see the, um, well, there are sections on here, but, uh.
Do you have any topic?
Yeah, right. Yeah, there's a, there's a piece right here, and it's overgrown. Yeah, it was never maintained, except when we had to put our drainage in, so we dug it out.
Yeah, I mean, I think we're just, we're cognizant of the fact that water's flowing towards that neighborhood. We wanna make sure that.
Oh, yeah.
That's all being captured and treated and dealt with appropriately, so that it's not hidden.
Yeah, not dumping on people's properties, yeah, we gotta get that.
Yeah, just after sleep.
But wait, again, when we did this twenty years ago, I remember, um, that we had to dig this out over here, make sure that it was flowing here to here, there's a pipe actually from here to here.
Yep.
I believe this is pipe two, but, so it all flows to Franklin Park.
Okay, Eric, do you have any requests for materials from him?
Not at this time.
Okay. Um, yeah, I mean, getting through the checklist, do you have the site plan checklist? You know, elevation, site plan, swipe, all that, I mean, get that whole thing in so that we can take a look at it.
Oh, yeah, yeah. I mean, as for the concept, though, I mean, obviously working out that, making sure the stormwater is adequate, take care of these buildings and the parking, and then
Yeah.
what building's gonna go first and the easements and all that kind of stuff, um, the concept is okay, I assume.
Conceptually, I don't.
These are office buildings, or?
Yeah, there's one story.
Office and, yeah, office, professional office, medical professional office, that's what he's variance, um, says I can be.
Yeah.
And this is medical right now, this is gonna be medical, and this is office.
I'm sure if they are medical use, that we're accounting for the correct apartment.
Yeah.
Spaces in there. Uh, conceptually, though, I don't think anyone has issued buildings themselves, I think there's a lot of fine detail that's gotta be worked out.
Right.
Conceptually, I think we can progress to.
The only reason why I'm asking that is because, uh, people are buying it from, you know, they have a type of deal with this period.
Yep, I think at this point, I, I would encourage you to, to work it all out, to get us a preliminary package to.
I would encourage you to, to really get that SWIP because.
Well, I think it's more, it's more than SWIP, right, I mean, I think, you know, I mean, Steve was in the past, what do you own that building? Yeah. But that's what I mean, it's gotta work out the details, you gotta put the SWIP together, you gotta get, you need, you need.
It's right, right, there it is, right, so. Yeah, everything is fire. Or actually, or services.
Yep.
And there has to be an agreement between the two.
Right.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's, that's.
Yep, I think you know what you're gonna get to us.
Yeah.
But we'll, I mean, we encourage you, do a full package, so, so do please, you know, maybe, maybe get like a quick feedback, you can, but.
Yeah, I'm gonna say.
Yeah, with the original, like, we were talking about it, since this is a concept, we're like, look, you know, you guys are gonna say, no, we're not gonna, you can't keep this office building. That's what, until Alana found the use variance, and I guess is still in place.
Yeah, it runs with the land.
Right, so, uh, I mean, that was a big deal right there, it's like, if we can't do these things, regardless of the size might change or whatever, um, you know, that was holding us up from, no, not, not extending our due diligence area, because we don't have a mind, but.
But here, you're gonna receive getting more detailed terms.
Okay.
Pull together.
Yep, I'll talk to the engineer.
Okay, thank you.
All right, thank you, appreciate it, yeah.
Uh, next up, Nottingham, so.
I'm surprised there were.
Dog, I thought you were locked the door.
I'm surprised there were.
He's still got the key.
We need to change that lock, yeah.
You guys wanna share it?
This is why I told you guys not to close the doors and let them rock.
I know, I know.
And it's up on spring.
Wow. He mixed all the work and cut down all the trees, so, you know.
Oh, you're working.
I'm gonna start, witching. So, thank you very much for having us in tonight, um, we appreciate it, and we were actually able to, uh, make some miraculous efforts here in getting an updated survey, which reflects the new site plan, uh, for the subdivision. So down below here is Steve's house, we, we did get the pool and the garage and all the, the hard surfaces, you know, in there, the basketball court. Um, we, what we decided to do is because there was so much of a coverage issue with, uh, his current home that we decided to combine these lots altogether, so if, if you can slide that down, all of this, this one point, I think it's, what is it, two?
So it's gonna go from three lots to two lots?
Yeah, this is gonna be lot one, this is gonna be lot two, and it's all of this, and the, the concept of this is that he's already using this, he owns all of this. Um, but he wants to have some privacy behind here, so that nobody can ever do a future development factor. This is kind of just to be held and reserved, he's not planning on doing anything with this either.
So there were two lots, now?
Three.
Well.
So it's three.
It was three, now it's two.
An L shaped lot that was gonna be the buffer before now meant to be combined with the existing house.
Right. This will all be combined, this, now it's a big L.
Right. And then this is for future house, if it sells off or something, this lot one.
No.
No, there's a house there right now.
There's a house there. There's a house there.
Yeah, there's a house there now, the, the concept of this is so that he wants to sell this off, but he wants to maintain the property back here for privacy.
Okay.
So what's different from what we looked at?
Yeah.
Lot different, yeah.
Yeah, well, it's a lot.
Just changed today, so.
Yeah, it did, yeah, I apologized for the last minute, but.
I was gonna say that to you.
It was very classy.
Very classy.
So they. Yeah, we just two lot, two lot. Question?
Yeah, I mean, what about some of the stuff that seemed like it was a good channel, you know, first of all?
Back here?
The sport.
That, that's it, I mean, that's. There, it looks like it goes back pretty far, but it stops well before the pro- wow, I'm gonna say it's probably
like twenty feet. Twenty feet, there's a, there's a, we have like eighty, well, sixty foot hill, it's almost vertical, and then it's eighty yards, if you look at Google Satellite, it's eighty yards to like a hundred foot drop in, you know, court. S U and Drumland owns that hill, and to the left of me, there's a drainage easement pond to the left of my property. I've, I've lived there since nineteen ninety eight, I dealt with Peter Weber and some other people, asked if I could, you know, put this four court past their property, they said, you don't pay taxes on it, it's an asset, but can't build it, not, we're never gonna use it, that's fine. So, I mean, you literally can't even drive a vehicle, ten feet past that four court, because it just goes straight up. It's, it's part of the old board, if, if anybody's been up back there, there's a bunch of cycle issues, you know, bike paths back there and stuff. I haven't been back there yet, but not out, not with a bike, but, I mean, the whole thing is with the bike paths and stuff like that, deer trails.
I think we have running paths too at S U that go back there, like crossing.
Yeah, yeah, and it goes all the way to Parks Reservation.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's that thing that everybody fought for during COVID, where they wanted to.
It's a very, actually.
That's, yeah, but that's like literally the vertical sixty feet, and then.
And where is that on this, just?
Just the.
Basically, if you see the back line?
Yeah.
That's it, I mean, it just.
Like it's a lot eighty.
No, no, what, it's like eighty.
This, this is Drumland's property here, and it goes, it literally goes right up to a shale cliff.
It's that, that's, that's right where that shale cliff is.
Okay, so what is the dotted building line, like, what is that?
This is a basketball court, it's hard, hard field, yeah.
Yes.
And then there's, there's a garden with a chicken wire fence around it and the gravel drive.
Used to be a horse farm.
Look at that, it looks like Alana's in Google because it doesn't have road, it's got rocks and waters everywhere, but.
Lots of trees.
It's a lot of trees, he does have lots of trees, so. So we know this guy, we know this is.
Well, is it, I guess, so on Google Maps, when I'm looking at it, it doesn't look like that shape for the basketball court or whatever you just said was painted?
Probably some of the trees.
Yeah, there's, there's some heavy trees.
Yeah, what, what is it, it's like green and blue?
Um, that's my biggest painting, it was a forty five hundred square foot painting I did out of tents, warm paint, a little different.
Okay.
It's not like normal.
You're different, is that what you just said?
A little bit.
Your shirt really cuts.
I don't know you, so.
Yeah, no, I, yeah, I, I didn't wanna be typical, so I, I made a painting for my daughter, so she gets time before.
Okay.
Okay.
Um, Alana, do you have a hand with the, excuse me, what does set back is on the residential house, what it's supposed to be?
Twelve feet.
Twelve feet? Okay, so it's ten point nine, but it is a pre-existing, um, uh, preferred setback, which, uh, potentially will just set back where it needs to be. Here's.
Okay. We had this, so I think we'll take a look at this, make sure there's no other comments, questions, and we'll go back to you.
Okay. Any concerns tonight?
Sorry.
Just your shirt.
Huh?
Just your shirt.
No, I mean, I think going down three lots to two lots, okay, I don't think there's any, any concern.
Oh, wasn't it, sorry, there was four lots, right?
Well, when is the other house there?
Sorry, because I own a house and all that other property, so there was a house plus, so that was a lot, and then the L around it was two lots.
So we're eating a couple.
Well, how's the?
Lot in between was three lots, and then my house was four lots.
But that, that other house in the lot, we're not doing anything with, so we're saying we're combining the house, the lot next door, and the L shape, and so those three lots would become one, and the fourth lot would stay as is.
Right, okay. Okay.
With the other house, right?
Well, the other house is gonna combine with the land.
Yes.
So.
Oh, to the north, yeah.
Yeah, that was a lot. Yeah, so I, I guess tactic, I think there was four lots.
This was. So, yeah, the lots.
Right.
Eric, do you have, Eric, do you have the existing survey that we're looking at, just for clarity?
Survey we have now, though, doesn't show the property, that this property, house, this is now part of it.
Yeah, but.
Really didn't receive digital plans today, which means that, just the priority of this to see my lot.
Yeah, interesting, right, no, yeah, we have the house, all the stuff on this, this is, this, this lot down here was not what we looked at, I mean, it was this, this, and this.
Okay, right.
Okay, you just state this parcel, right?
It's this, and then one, right, and then this and this total.
Right.
So we're, they're looking for two different, two changes, change of making this one and the change of making that one.
Yeah, that makes it all goes to the same. Yes, you are correct, yes.
Yeah, okay, and that's how I was understanding it.
So go ahead, go ahead for four lots, to two.
Right, because we were, and I just say that because we were previously looking at three, down to two.
So it's like.
So we were looking at these three, right?
Was it five?
Yes.
I think it's much cleaner this way.
So this is, this was this line here, it exists.
Oh, okay.
Okay, one, down, and this, right.
Oh, I see, there we are.
So they're taking this and they're, they're adding this one.
They're chopping this off of that.
They're taking, they're essentially taking this line and doing that, and then create one more here, and then the rest can be added. Yep.
So, it's basically the lot line adjustment, simple subdivision, and we're going lots. So, you know, we'll look at it, go through that exercise, potentially, in the next meeting.
Right, okay.
That'd be great.
We, we're written journals.
We keep our integrity.
It's a lot, so.
Those are military lots, I don't just fuck with us, these, these, these are the, 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 the.
Yeah, and you get those, like, the full stack and, um, the, the copies.
Yeah.
Yeah, is that flash drive okay?
Oh, yes, okay, yeah.
Yeah, okay, I can give you the, you want to use your, yes, I got extras here.
I was hoping you could have mine. Had fourteen.
My house, my house is really terrifying, this place is more than welcome.
Thank you, guys.
All right. You all set?
Any?
I'm all set, okay. All right, last up, we got C N, labor unions. So same, this is a contest, so, and I, you know, ten, fifteen minutes, and.
Yep, yep.
And we'll give the update.
Yeah, yeah, um, I don't know if you remember, but I only, I came before the board last November, December.
Yep.
Can you start?
Yeah, go for it.
Okay, uh, so, so it was a, a different project back then, the, the laborers purchased the lot behind their existing lot. This, right now, they have one point nine acres, uh.
This is, right now, they have one point nine acres uh at uh, that's that's right here, that's their existing. But they purchased this lot in the meantime, and that's where we were gonna build before. Um, there's there's still have a plan in the future, by ten years, to build on this. Um, but right now, their plan is to build on this lot. I think what they decided was, um, it it, they're building a training facility for hands hands-on training for laborers. So, they're teaching on masonry, scaffolding, um, you know, just all concrete work, pipe uh pipe installation. Um, all sorts of things that is oftentimes tough to teach, especially during the winter in Syracuse, so, um, they want an indoor facility for that. So, uh, what they're planning on is is doing an addition on the back of this existing building. The the back portion of the existing building um is currently used uh for classroom training for the laborers. So, right now, they have classroom training, but they don't have any hands-on training. That's kind of just left to uh learning on the job. So, that's the the purpose of this. Um, if you could go to the next. So, the what their plan is to build a five thousand thirty-two square feet addition uh on the existing building. This is, this is the existing classroom areas that they would continue to use as classroom areas of what they do that people show up. Um, five o'clock at the earliest, uh, and they go to classroom training, and then after that, they go into uh, they go into the addition uh for actual hands-on training. So, the the, I'll say the problem with this, and I don't think it's a problem, but from a code perspective, zoning code, perhaps it is. Because if you add up all the square footage here and uses, uh, we figured for office and the training facility, uh, I come up with seventy-eight spaces that we need. But the two functions are never there at the same time. The office function runs from, some people get there at six in the morning, but from basically seven uh to uh four thirty. And the training, when it does happen, which is not every day, the training function happens in the evenings and sometimes on Saturday mornings. So, my question regarding parking is, I I I don't see a mechanism in the code for you know, for accommodating different times of use uh of the same building. What the what the the laborers would like to do is with this additional property that they have is say that, okay, if say now or in the future, that parking is needed, that they would build this and, you know, provide an easement uh for that to the property so that it stayed with the uh with the existing property that they have.
So, first thing we'll kind of touch on is the idea that this building is shift can't really be taken into consideration in some extent here because in the event that laborers builds the building without somebody else who's in normal regular business hours, we've got to look at the amount of parking that's there for this stuff. Um, this is industrial, correct?
Correct.
So, reserved parking is actually not allowed in industrial.
Correct.
Um, so when we look at the reserve parking, you can't actually put the reserve parking adjacent parcel because they do encumber that adjacent parcel.
You would have to do a contract.
Can you have offsite parking? So, offsite parking or in reserve? Well, I'm offsite parking.
Offsite, because we can't, we can't all of the stuff that would have to be done, but
Yeah. Good day.
No, or.
But if we do it over there, then that site is now
Okay.
tied to this one, so if if that one gets sold, that partn disappears for this current site.
It can't, it can't disappear.
It would have to be an easement or something.
But it it can't have to remain. Right, so there would have to be an easement that would have to be gone without.
Right, right.
The work for you, yeah.
Correct, correct.
So, when we looked at this, we actually looked at, is it possible to get those twenty-two parking spaces onto this site? You know, extending that parking along the bottom down there, and then extending along the right-hand side of that vertical east that's up there, getting all of the parking on this site so that we don't have a clean line between the two.
Yep. Okay.
And then.
And that could potentially be reserve parking if you put. Or the, through the CBA, right?
Right, right, which we're we're willing to go for variance if we need to. I mean, just, I mean, we don't want to build any more parking than we need, and I don't think you.
We just, we we don't want you to build any more parking than you need to, but because it's industrial, we can't put it, it's a lot of time.
Right, right. I I I understand that.
So, uh.
It's kind of where I thought we were going with this, but I just, I I wanted to talk through it to see, okay, is that the right approach to this?
Yeah. Yeah, so I think we'd want to have you show it all along this parcel.
Okay.
In there.
Okay.
Uh.
Are are you good off this thing about the weed space?
The that is lines on the left.
That that's existing right now that they're proposing to close off. Now, when the.
Yeah, I I'm assuming there was a comment last year that I'm assuming you still want us to do that.
But I mean, I think we look at, you know, street trees, you know, that's part of the planning board.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah.
All the entrance is going to be closed.
No, no, no.
Down.
No, 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 this 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 driveway that goes over to the neighbor on the corner.
On the left.
Right.
Yeah.
Yeah, that would, that would think we're both gonna close on, but I mean, I don't know. I mean, if you if you look for twenty-two spots, you might need to kind of get some of that stuff on there, you know, you can plant long fly, hold on.
Or if this board looks at the plan that's supposed to make, you know, five, you know, or variance.
If they, I'm realizing.
So. Like a a number variance.
Okay, okay. You got a slope. Yep.
And a reserve could, like, so the idea is to work with this board, help the software to make sense, then this board will recommend it.
Okay, to the CPA, okay, okay.
Yeah.
It's almost like you could double up the five that are there, you made that a little bit different layout, yeah.
Mm-hmm.
And then like makes that extend the sixteen along the bottom or and then you, you build lot front, I think you would wanna almost minimize the parking to put it in the landscape and you keep some green area front.
Yeah, I mean, I, I think it's, that's on you, you kind of take a look at, you know, know of the intentions or uh the
I don't know. But to keep it in reserve up there, yeah.
what this board's essentially looking for, you know.
Okay, okay.
Yeah, we, I'll I'll see what we could do there on site, but yeah, if if we do. Uh, elevations.
Drainage, those drainage is also off.
So, yes.
So, they have to have an easement.
Yeah, right now, the, right now, the way this works now is there's a catch basin out here, so the storm drainage comes out to here, then there's a pipe here, and then there's a pipe out here that in, you know, there's a, almost a, I would say almost a detention area here, almost. I mean, if you look at the the grades.
Yes.
Yeah, subdivide the back lot and add that to this lot, so you could have the parking and drain.
Uh, that is.
Yeah, we did talk about um that property line, all of the all the bottom lines. So, right, you're gonna adjust to the right a little bit there, that line, if you were to carry that straight up, nope, to the left.
No, no, the one to the left, and now it's straight up.
No, this, this one period of.
That one straight up. Catch the north property line of.
And square it off, you see how it comes in? See the one up higher, up higher and all the way to the right?
Square off in there. Then it can become.
So, make that square, yeah, like that.
Or something in there to become, I'm calling drainage because the other side's gonna have the same drainage, but
Okay. Okay. Yeah. Yeah. Yeah.
That would.
Okay, yes.
Excuse me, my property is adjacent to this, I know the area very well. When he's done, I'd like to address some of the concerns I have.
Sure.
Thank you.
Um, we'll need to obviously see building elevations, a full landscape plan.
Yeah. Yep.
Drainage, green.
Drainage, all the whole, the whole getting.
Getting clued off.
Yep, no, no, we we expect that. I just, uh, we're we're trying to see whether this is a reasonable, whe- whether we could get there with this approach.
Yep. Yeah, I mean, I think you're gonna be putting a lot on the site.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So, I think you're gonna have to kind of walk through it, but.
Mm-hmm.
Is that landlocked or parcel in the back? Can you do that though?
No, it it it, no, this 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 goes down to this.
I think if we.
And there's still a swath of land up there that goes to fly.
There there is, although this is, this is the wetland up here, and so, uh, we we can't really get through there.
Okay.
Sure, and you recall the last time Bob came in, remember we, originally, we talked about looking down the斜路and this kind of.
Yeah, we we had, we had, uh, we had dotted a driveway in here, which we didn't really want, but um, I think the board's opinion was they'd rather not have a driveway there, so we we eliminated that.
Correct. I think the last time you were in, we're just, well, we're pretty much done.
Yeah, 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 yeah.
Right, and you called us and said, geez, I'm not coming in, and we were like, wow, this was a great project.
Yeah. Yeah, well, we we still hope to do that one day, but that's uh, this this is, this is more of a need, a current need. Okay, alright.
The, I would say if he did one or the other, he could get everything in there instead of even doing.
Well, that's, that's what I thought you had talked about earlier, was just taking that north line over and the other line up.
Big hole.
Right.
And then you erase the.
And then erase that line in between the two of them, or from the top one, carry it over and carry it up.
Mm-hmm. Mm-hmm.
Doesn't eliminate that part of the line between in order to capture that space or drainage.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay.
Are there any other questions?
Let's begin.
Okay. By all means, you got about two minutes.
I'm sorry, I should remember.
Yeah, Bob, Bob Sager.
Bob Sager, thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Barb Turner, and this is, my husband's in my property here. I'm glad to hear that they're not going to build a driveway there because you go down to your feet, you're gonna hit water. There's an underground stream that is always flooding out Tom. You know, little properties, uh, there's some pumps aren't going, they flood out. This is Napoli who lives right across the street. She actually has a well, it's still in her front yard, though she's hooked up to the public water, and that water goes like this all the time. She tried to hook up to the gravity flow sewer off of Brower's Development. In the driest part of the summertime, the contractor comes in, starts to dig, goes down to your feet, goes, can't do it, keep hitting water. So, you're always having underground water here. We flood out over here on our property. We we use primary, maybe an acre, we have two and a quarter acres, and all this area here floods out, in fact, we still got tunnels. We can't start cutting our lawn till June. The other thing, the fairs live up here, they're on the septic, we're on a septic. They're on four sewer mains, I probably grabbed you there, Tom's on a four sewer main. Anything going in here is gonna affect the septic. Also, the town is, I know it's, doesn't have anything to do with this property directly, but the town's largest park, Maxwell Park, is on that street, may have a five-year plan, and they just bought back in twenty eighteen, I think twelve acres. And they plan on doing a Lake Creek revitalization plan, which is also going to be incorporating bike trails, walking trails. The town bought two properties not far from here and had them demolished because the town bought that property. Also, just the other side of this property, uh, is the Sorbellos, and they're farming it. So, anything here, built in here, water-wise, is gonna affect anything downstream. We're on the low end of elevation. If you know where uh, around that colonial wood furniture is, you know, two ninety eight is very high. What does it do? Goes right down. And then across the street from us here, Bowers, if you don't know, check with the E C Cameron K now, they had PCB contamination, they've got pest wells all over, some of it right across the street from us, and they were just checking them, so it's an ongoing thing. And they're looking to see if it's going into them under Red American. So, those are things that you might not have known, you might want to take into consideration. We bought our property in the eighties, it was agricultural, with a residential variance. Sometime in the early nineties, they changed it to industrial, no one on the street got notified, we're not gonna, it's in the past.
Long before this quarter.
Yeah, no, it's long in the past. So, there's like fourteen homes on Badly.
Yep.
And then right across the street from, we're not, nobody's, you know, against them doing this, we all need the trains, they need the hands-on. But it's that green area between us and Tom Sorbello, it's all trees.
Yeah, I mean, I think what we're.
And I'm concerned about the back part of our property. If they do put a parking lot in there, it's gonna affect us. I mean, if they do most of their um training after normal hours, that they have their business in front of it. No one's there or very rarely, and they got all those parking spots. I know it's not your property or whatnot, but I.
Yep.
Um.
We appreciate the comments.
Thank you.
Um, I think if this progresses forward.
And there's a federal flood, which is.
Yeah, yeah, that'll all be part of our review.
It's not far from there. But I was more concerned about the fairs, our, Tom Sorbello, he's uh disabled, so he can't really come to these meetings. Mrs. Napoli, she's ninety-three, you know, so I really am impressed with all of your, sitting over here and listening to how you check into things and how you research, I'm really impressed.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for letting us know.
Yeah, yeah, they.
Yeah, just so you know, the meetings are online if they wanted to attend and couldn't come.
I don't know if Tom has a computer, and Mrs. Napoli, I don't know what she's saying, and ninety-three, if she texts Sandy, I don't.
I apparently had an iPhone at ninety-two, so.
I'm still gonna answer right, oh geez.
Ah.
Okay.
Yes.
Any comments, questions? No, I think that addresses all of our in this evening. I didn't even have to say, Kevin first. Second, all in favor, uh, close the meeting, thank you very much.
Because I want to find what it's. Do you wanna read it? Do you wanna find what it's?
No, I need to throw off the meeting.
Small book.
Sir Jamie, why all the references?
Yeah.
Yeah. With those who, with, but with those.
I don't know why they exist.
Because it's a very different kind, like of a, are you talking, you're talking.